Good evening and welcome to tonight's Monroe City Council meeting. This is the regular business meeting for Tuesday, October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. The time right now is seven P. M. I'm going to go ahead and ask that our clerk please call the roll.
Council members present establishing aquarium. You have some echo here. Fulcher, Beaumont, Hanford, Walker, Fisher, Scarborough.
Okay, thank you. And we heard from Councilmember Gamble earlier this evening that he would not be here. And our hearts and prayers are with him and his family. And we'll just say that unless there is objection, we will consider his absences excused. All right. Councilmember Gamble is identified for the pledge of allegiance. I'll go ahead and lead the pledge of allegiance this evening since he's not here. Thank you.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Next item that we have on the agenda this evening is public comments. Do we have any anybody who has signed in to speak this evening? Okay. Is there anybody that wanted to speak to the council this evening during the three minute public comments? All right, seeing none, I'll spare us the reading of the script. It sounds more official when you say of the so reading of the script. All right, we're going to go ahead and move on to consent agenda. Councilmember Fisher.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda minus five point seven. Approve opioid settlement funding spending plan and save that for discussion at a later date.
All right. Okay, thank you. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda items five through five point one seven with the exception of five point seven, correct?
Yes, sir.
Which is regarding opioid settlement funding spending plan. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes six zero. Councilmember Fisher, I understand that you wanted to bring this back for discussion at a later date.
That's affirmative.
Okay, thank you. Do any councilmembers have any objection to bringing this back at a later date? Okay, thank you. Staff, is there any reason why this needs to be decided tonight? Okay, sounds great. I'll go ahead and work with staff to have this identified on a future agenda for discussion. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is new business. The first item that we have is six point one park board appointment with Mr. McCorkle. Councilmember Hanford.
Mayor.
Okay. All right, thank you. For the record, I think that just earned you a Juris Doctorate. I'll I'll talk to our attorney later. So we'll come get you when we're done. Thank you. All right, Liam. Mr. McCorkle. Go ahead. Oh, thank you. All right. For the record, you should be hearing Jeopardy music as we are working on technical difficulties.
There we go. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Before you tonight is a appointment to the Park Board of Haley Hanford. Currently on the park board, I believe there are two vacancies. Mayor advertised via Monroe this week, Facebook, all the usual means. Mayor conducted interviews and before you tonight, as I mentioned, is the appointment of Haley Hanford. So with that, I will turn it back to the mayor for your consideration.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. McCorkle. I'm going to go ahead and ask that my appointee come forward Haley Hanford to the podium and just say a few words up there at the podium right over there about why you're interested in serving briefly and introduce introduce yourself briefly and why you're interested in serving. All right, thank you very much. You can go ahead and have a seat. I turn to the council. Go ahead, Councilmember Beaumont.
Thank you, Mayor. So I am really, really excited about this confirmation and Haley's joining the park board. I served on park board for eight years before I became a council member, and I think it is one of the most important roles in the city. And I have witnessed Haley walking her dog and and out in the community and she is eyes and ears. She's looking to see where improvements might be made to our parks. And she is just a wonderful involved citizen of Monroe, and I am very, very pleased to confirm the mayor's appointment of Haley Hanford to the park board position six with the term ending December thirty first, twenty twenty-nine.
Yeah, I have a motion from Councilmember Beaumont, a second from one of those two councils. Okay, Councilmember Fisher put his thumb up on the on the end. Second from Councilmember Fisher to move to confirm the mayor's appointment of Haley Hanford to the park board position six with the term ending December thirty one, twenty twenty-nine. One moment, please. All right. And I'm going to request that the maker of the motion withdraw the motion so that we can go with a motion that I'm going to read in because there's more to it. Okay, so there are two motions before you that are not on the screen, and I apologize for that. The first motion requested, so what it is, is that the appointee would be serving an unexpired term ending on December thirty first, twenty twenty-five. So my request is first to move that, which I will read in its entirety, so you can say so moved if you like. The second one is to then also move to confirm the mayor's appointment to a full term to commence on January first, twenty twenty-five, since the unexpired term is so close. So I'm going to read the first one. Move to confirm the mayor's appointment of Haley Hanford to fill the unexpired term of park board position six ending on December thirty first, twenty twenty-five. Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Beaumont, a second from Councilmember Fisher for the motion that I just read into the record. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes five zero. Thank you. The second one is move to confirm the mayor's appointment of Haley Hanford to park board position six for a four year term commencing on January one, twenty twenty-five. I have a motion from Councilmember Beaumont, a second from Councilmember Fisher for the motion that I just read into the record. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes five zero. Thank you very much, everybody, and congratulations, Board Member Hanford. And you can let the council member know that it is Board Member Hanford from now on. All right. Next item on the agenda is new business items six point two, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six lodging tax advisory committee LTAC appointments. And before you read that into the record, Mr. McCorkle will let the record show that Councilmember Hanford has returned to the chambers. Go ahead, Mr. McCorkle.
Thanks again, Mayor. So also before you tonight is appointments to the lodging tax advisory committee. According to our municipal code and state law, lodging tax advisory committee must have two representatives that are eligible to receive lodging tax grant funds, so nonprofits, and must have two that are owners or hotelers of hotels, motels, et cetera, as well as one council member who is appointed to serve as chair of the committee. We received four applications, all of which were reapplications. LTAC members serve one year terms. And before you tonight are the mayor's recommendations for appointments.
All right, thank you very much. So I turn to the council. Go ahead, Councilmember Beaumont.
Of Councilmember Kate Walker to the lodging tax advisory committee as the elected official and chair from ending June thirty first, twenty twenty-six.
Yeah, I have a motion from Councilmember Beaumont, a second from Councilmember Scarborough for the first requested action on the screen for six point two new business. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes six zero. Thank you. Councilmember Walker. He saluted. I'm going to consider that a flag up. Yes, I am tonight. Go for it.
I just want to say it's an honor to serve. Thank you, guys. I want to move to appoint Karen Bierstedhu to position two of the lodging tax advisory committee as a lodging business member with a term ending June thirty, twenty twenty-six.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Walker, a second from Councilmember Scarborough for requested action number two and new business item six point two. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes six zero. Thank you. Flags? Okay, go ahead, and Councilmember Fisher.
Move to appoint Doug Hobbs to position three of the lodging tax advisory committee as tourism industry member with term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Fisher, a second from Councilmember Fulcher. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes six zero. Councilmember Fulcher. You picked up you picked up your iPhone and looked at me. I figured that was a flag.
That was a flag. I like it. Move to appoint Connie Goss to position four of the lodging tax advisory committee as tourism industry member with term ending June thirtieth of twenty twenty-six.
Yeah, I have a motion from Councilmember Fulcher, a second from Councilmember for Hanford for requested action number four in six point two new business. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes six zero. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Mr. McCorkle. Next item on the agenda is six point three new business. This is ordinance number zero two one, twenty twenty-five utility revenue bonds with Julie Olson. Did I miss something? Okay. We are going to want to take a short recess. We're going to take it. We're going to take a short recess until nineteen fifteen on the board there. So we are in a four minute recess. Laura, me Swedish meatballs. I came from the Swedish meatballs this evening. I didn't think I was going to eat. I know. Yeah. All right, we're back out of recess. Thank you, everybody. And we'll just go ahead and reannounce for the record. This is new business item number six point three ordinance number zero two one, twenty twenty-five utility revenue bonds with Julie Olson. Good evening.
I think that's on. Is that on?
It's on. Yes.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Have to get closer to it. Okay. Yes. So good evening, Mayor and Council. I am here to talk about the utility revenue bonds. And the requested action for tonight is two things. Move to waive council rules of procedure requiring two readings of an ordinance before adoption and then move to approve the ordinance as set before you. So there've been several discussions about the need to issue bonds for our utility revenue bonds. And most of these discussions have occurred along with the municipal campus funding bonds and began in twenty twenty-two. And as you can see here, the need to issue utility revenue bonds was included in the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget at sixteen million dollars to support the sewer capital projects, but also two million dollars to support water and stormwater projects as well. And then again, in the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget at twelve and a half million to support the sewer capital projects. So the budget, the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget assumed the twelve and a half million in bonds to fund the sewer capital projects as well as a two point seven million dollar loan from the Department of Ecology that we did not receive. And also there's our sewer capital connection charges were meant to go towards also funding capital project, and they are down fifty-three percent over the same time period last year. So it's important to note, we are requesting up to twenty point five million dollars authority, but that doesn't mean that we will issue twenty point five million dollars in bonds. And they can be used to fund capital improvements for all of the utilities, so water, sewer and stormwater, but not for general fund purposes. And the primary request to issue the bonds right now is to construct a biosolids treatment facility, and that is for treating wastewater. And the total project cost is twenty point nine million dollars, of which we have already expended eight point three million to date. And the remaining expenditures are twenty point seven million. And we're looking at doing this kind of, I guess, quickly and before the end of the year to fund some major costs coming up, particularly the March payment in March of twenty twenty-six of three point six million dollars. And this is the remaining cash flow on the project. So the bond council and underwriter are here tonight, Dave and Stacy. If you have any questions or if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
All right, thank you. If you could put the requested actions back up and then we'll turn to the council. Just so that they're up there. All right, thank you very much. Go ahead, Councilmember Scarborough.
How will this affect our need for funding for the police department building?
It will not at all because it's it's just utilities. It's just the utilities, so it cannot be used for general fund funding.
Understood, but it puts us in a position of being in debt.
But the the utility debt is separate from the general fund revenue debt and our meeting our debt requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions from council or a motion? Councilmember Walker, go ahead.
Did you say the two point five million dollar grant from ecology was withdrawn? We didn't get that money?
It was a loan and we did not get it. It was assumed in the budget, but we did not get it.
Okay. I obviously am inexperienced with municipal bonds, but are these are these council manic or matic? Is that the same thing?
Come on up and introduce yourself for the record. Julie, can you turn on this mic? Or switch mics? Sure.
I'm Dave Tragus, sir. I'm managing director of DA Davidson. I've had the pleasure of working with the city for more than twenty-five years on bond deals and be glad to answer questions you may have. So the one I heard from Councilmember Walker was whether these would be considered council manic bonds. And the answer is no, because council manic bonds are similar to limited tax general obligation bonds, which were issued for part of this beautiful facility. These are deemed to be revenue bonds, so it's a different statute. And the security is solely the pledge of the combined utility to pay off the revenue bonds. And the city can direct funds from either the water, sewer or storm to pay off the debt service for the bonds.
If we were to do a bond issuance two years from now or a year from now for a police facility is this outstanding, these outstanding bonds, are you saying that they're not going to affect our, I guess, profile?
Your credit rating or something like that. That's correct. So we're actually, we receive a distinct credit rating for each series of bonds, and we'll be going back to standard and pores for the rating on these revenue bonds, which is separate from the rating of your council manic LTGO bonds for this facility or a potential issue that you may have in the future for the police station or whether you go to the voters or just do that on a non-voted council manic basis. Separate rating, separate bond issue. Separate security.
Awesome. Thank you.
Any other questions or a motion? Councilmember Hanford. He was leaning into the mic and pushing his button.
Thank you, Mayor. I move. And just to review, we don't usually waive these, but we do for important things like this. So I move to waive council rules of procedure requirement for two readings of an ordinance before adoption.
I have a motion from Councilmember Hanford, a second from Councilmember Hanford for requested action number one shown on the screen. Any discussion on the motion? Councilmember Beaumont. Did I say Beaumont? You know, I ordered coffee earlier today. I ordered coffee earlier today and I I they said your name, please, and I stumbled over my name. So it's, you know. All right. So that'd be Councilmember Hanford, Councilmember Beaumont, and discussion on the motion. Go ahead, Councilmember Walker.
Can there be clarification around why we're skipping second reading for this? Is there a time sensitivity or?
So it allows us to go back. It allows us to go back sixty days from the time that the ordinance is passed. So this would allow us to go back sixty days from now and cover those costs of the project that we've already spent.
Okay.
So that's really part of it, as well as, I mean, just to be able to take the time, you know, look at the market and determine when the best time to go out is. Stacy could speak more to that if you want more information about that.
If the ratings happen to be unfavorable, would that come back to us first or?
Right, so the the schedule that we have is we'd be going back to standard and pores for a rating on 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 the bonds. We expect that to be a high investment grade rating based on the history of the city and the cash flows. So that investment grade rating allows us to market the bonds to wide group of investors at a low borrowing cost. But we will have a chance to review all that before we price the bonds. In other words, that's when we lock in the interest rates on the bonds, which is currently expected to be early mid-December if we stay on this schedule. But we have the flexibility to move that schedule based on the tax exempt bond market conditions at the time.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions or discussion on the motion? All right, we have a motion. We have a second. We're going to go ahead and call for the question. All in favor?
All right.
All opposed? Motion passes six zero. Thank you. All right. Councilmember Hanford, go ahead. Sorry, the flags went up when I said all of any.
I move to approve ordinance numbers zero two one, twenty twenty-five authorizing the issuance and sale of one or more of water and sewer revenue bonds of the city of Monroe, Washington in the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed twenty million, five hundred thousand dollars to provide funds to finance improvements to the water and sewer system of the city, fixing or citing parameters within with respect to certain terms and covenants of the bonds, appointing the finance director and city administrator to approve the final terms of the bond and providing for other related matters.
Yeah, I have a motion from Councilmember Hanford. Who was the second from? Okay, Councilmember Walker at the second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor?
All right.
All opposed? Motion passes six zero. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda then is council member reports. Councilmember Scarborough.
Matt, give your report.
All right, Councilmember Beaumont.
Caught me by surprise. Along with council members Hanford, Fisher, Walker and Fulcher, we attended an emergency management forum in Wenatchee that was put on by Association of Washington Cities. And I'll let my fellow council members talk about what, you know, that did for them, how important that was to them. I learned a lot, especially about cybersecurity and how to protect our city and our council and our city hall. And it was really, really interesting. There were some really dynamic speakers and it was time well spent. And it was great to all be there together and to be able to discuss it and really enjoyed that. And other than that, just been keeping busy. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Hanford.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, like Councilmember Beaumont said, we did that. Got to do the ribbon cutting for Wendy's today and chant Free Frosty, Free Frosty. And the mayor did the drum roll, please thing, and that was classic.
You have drums there.
Classic evening, yeah. And we got to to Tanny and I got to go in to buy our food and got cheered on by the whole cheerleader squad. So we were feeling really empowered, you know? Yeah. We can order food. But in all seriousness, this is a very special night for me. Some of you got to meet and spend time with Haley with one of our recent trips. And yeah, she's just really. She's just really gone and pursued this out of her own. And of course, I've encouraged, but yeah, so happy and so proud. So thank you for your confirmation.
Thank you. Councilmember Fulcher.
Thank you. Yes, we went to the emergency management training. That was very good. My little inner prepper was so happy with that meeting. So that was great. And then the chamber meeting today, Councilmember Low, County Councilmember Low and State Representative Mike Steele were there. And they just did such a good job of talking about some of the the issues that we're facing in Olympia. And I just appreciate when our our local representatives take time to meet with our local businessmen members. And two ribbon cuttings are on my checklist this last week. So yes, the Wendy's, that was a lot of fun. I ate my Frosty beforehand, so you know, I was ready to handle the scissors correctly. But also Sweet T's Boutique is a, yeah, it's a super cute place right above the old city hall, which is a wonderful building. So very excited to see some growth in our downtown, very excited to have Square Burgers here in nine eight two seven two, and that is all.
Right, thank you very much. Councilmember Walker.
Yeah, the emergency management meeting was great. I would love for us to schedule a special meeting covering some of those topics or just the the city's position in the event of different disasters. It really made you recognize the just how perilous the situation can be financially for cities. It was to a degree that I did not expect about the thresholds that have to be met before a city can receive state or federal relief. So again, always appreciative of the reserves that the city has. It puts us in a very, very lucky position. So thank you for the the good stewardship. So yeah, I would love to schedule a special meeting for that. Have an update from the Snohomish County tomorrow exploratory committee on redefining the role of that body. Today, they had a meeting where it was proposed that four new committees or not new committees, but it be reshaped into four committees, economic development, housing, infrastructure. And the fourth one is escaping me right now because, oh, health and human services, but that's going to be a delayed discussion. I voiced some of our our city's initial concerns about the risks of these groups continuing to grow uninterrupted and and taking on authority that that I kind of expressed some worry about. The next step for those recommendations are for it to go to the Snohomish County tomorrow steering committee and then potentially to be approved at the general assembly in in January. PSRC Transportation Board, there is a major, I would say, major revenue shortfall for their next plans. So they have been having meetings around the region to talk about what to do with that gap, whether to cut projects, issue a lot of new taxes. Big implications of that, I would suggest anyone weigh in on it. Obviously, there's there's middle ground, but it it was pretty interesting to to see the numbers and definitely some hard decisions have to be made. So yeah, I've had some extracurriculars to report on, but that's all I got.
All right, thank you very much, Councilmember Walker. Councilmember Fisher.
Good evening, everybody. Um, okay, so I got some concerns about speeding on Kelsey and Main Street that I thought I would just pass on from our neighborhood. It seems to be people talking about that maybe the yellow lights being too short. And I don't know if that's something that's that we keep an eye on, or I'm sure it's regulated, how easy it is to change. But they seem to be changing pretty quick. And that's a pretty wide intersection there at Main and Kelsey, so just something to to bring forward. Yes, we went to the emergency management thing in Wenatchee. It was great, a lot of good information there. I have a little bit of a parks report since things are kind of calming down a little bit. As some of you know, me and Um I have a little bit of a parks report since things are kind of calming down a little bit. As some of you know, me and some others up here joined me on my trash pickups um through Alborlon. Um everybody from just everyday residents to um school board director members um helping me out and wanting to do all of that, which was great. Um so ended up being somewhere around a hundred and fifty-five bags, big, huge black garbage bags. And if each one of those weighed about thirty-five pounds, which is might be a little bit light, um little over five thousand pounds of garbage taken out of there since April. So um hopefully some of the things that we're doing now will kind of tailor that a little bit and we won't have as as much next summer. Um the, it was a busy, it was a busy week. Um, what's that? Mm-hmm. Um and the chamber luncheon, I went to that also, uh which was great today. Uh a lot of good information. And then uh I don't know if anybody heard, there was a bus accident from with the high school bus coming home from Camas. I happen to be down there because my boy plays uh football for the high school. And just a little bit of a shout out to the school district. Um we were supposed to get home between one thirty, two o'clock in the morning. We actually got home about four thirty in the morning. Uh luckily, there was no really bad, serious injuries, which was great. And then how uh the school district kind of rolled out some of the information um was amazing. So I was waiting for my son at Monroe High School. Principal Willie showed up before the bu- bus was there, just on his own, kind of hearing about it, showing up, making sure everything was okay, if anybody needed anything. Um emails went out right away from the athletic director to Yasu Sopo, which was great. And then several emails after that. And of course, Superintendent uh Woodward was great with his email and keeping everybody kind of posted on the situation and kind of what was going on. So um unfortunate that it happened, but uh thankful that nobody was um seriously hurt. Like I always say, no heart review visits. And that's that's what we want. There were a couple of minor injuries, still somewhat significant. Um but nothing, nothing really, really crazy. So I'm thankful for that. And their response was amazing. So that's all I have.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Uh we're gonna go ahead and move on to item eight. This is staff and fire, staff and fire, staff and department reports. Uh six, I'm sorry, eight point one Public Works Department August and September twenty twenty-five reports with Mr. Roberts. Uh switch the other one maybe? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I can, yeah.
How about now? Is that better? Yeah.
There you go. You've got your radio voice there.
These are way more confusing than they look. Apparently, there's a switch on them. So apologize for that. Uh thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Uh so the Public Works Department report is in your packet, obviously. I just kind of some highlights there. Uh CIP five is underway. Thank you for approving the bond ordinance tonight. That project will continue trudging through until it's complete in a a little bit from now. Demolition of the initial sludge dryer, the initial demolition phase, I guess, of the former sludge dryer building, it's it's gone. Uh and a temporary unit has been set up on the western side of the plant. So it's actually a pretty interesting operation over there if you're into science and like that sort of thing. Uh item number two would be patching and line striping. That was completed as part of our TBD work that is reimbursed to the TBD. Our crews spent about twelve hundred hours doing uh wheel path patches or strip patches, depending on how you look at it. Um I've driven over nearly every one of them myself, and I give them a nine out of ten, maybe a ten out of ten on some of them. Pretty impressive uh work that they did there. And then number three on the list, uh it's fall. There's leaves on the road. They block storm drains. Everybody sees that when they back up and they flood. That's perfect time to uh invite some of your friends or maybe people in your local neighborhoods to adopt a drain. So we have a program for that now. It's uh something that meets our NPDS requirements for public education and outreach. And uh there's a full kind of makeup of it on the website and then also in the packet. So that concludes my report. Mayor, back to you.
All right. Thank you very much. Uh any questions for Jacob? Go ahead, Councilmember Beaumont.
I love the adopted drain. That's really great. Did that organically come from the city of Monroe or is that being done elsewhere?
It's being done elsewhere, but uh it's one of the one of the levers that we needed to pull to meet a permit requirement. We thought it was a good one. And so the the team back there is really excited about it.
That's great. Has anyone reached out to adopt a drain yet?
I am not sure. I will check.
That's really great. And are we publicizing that like on Facebook or? Okay, fantastic. I love that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Thank you. Uh before we go on to the next department report, Councilmember Hanford, you had your hand up um during one of the council members' reports, and I just remembered that.
That's okay. Thank you, Mayor. I I neglected to mention that I met I met a lady at an event earlier this week that some of you met also. And she lives on Hospital Road near Park Place Middle School near the bumps that we installed. And she was concerned about speeders still flying by. And I had told her that I could come have, she invited me to come have coffee whenever. And I said, I like my coffee black and I can be there whenever you'd like. So she texted me actually that this Thursday around two fifteen, any other council members are welcome to come with me. So uh if you're interested, just send me a text. Thank you. Okay. We won't have a worm. Don't worry.
Okay, thank you. You could see uh Deborah there. Yep. All right. Thank you very much. All right. Um community development, Mr. Bailey.
At least I know which microphone to go to.
Thanks for testing that out for uh for Lance. Yeah.
Thank you, Jacob. Uh this is the report for community development. It's in your packet. I'll just cover some highlights. This is just to remind you, right? This is for August. Um at our next report, we're gonna probably do two months so that we can catch up. Uh the highlight project highlight this month was or for August was um the the community development participation at the National Night Out, which um sort of this year after our two-year attending virtually every public event for the comp plan, we were trying to give staff a little bit of uh a little bit of a break. But this was one where um all the staff wanted, this is an event that staff likes to attend. They consider it very important. So we had, we had a really good turnout. We had um a couple of permit texts, our plans examiner, uh building official and a planner who who all volunteered to to go and and work the event. So um I think it it's uh it's it's an event that the department and the city uh has a lot of support for. Yay, Square Hamburgers. Uh this is probably the last time unless unless something happens to that building that I'll probably get to mention Wendy's. I think I've been mentioning it since I started working here. Um the interesting thing was as long as it took that project to get started, it was one of the quickest and smoothest projects to actually get built. Uh so it was because, you know, you worried about that because I mean, that it sort of went on for a number of years, literally, to get started. But they were a great group to work with and and everything. Um I think that some of the concern that I've seen on on um social media about some of the traffic concerns there, I think, give it a little bit of time once they they're doing normal business. I think everything will will be okay over there. And 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 yay, Square Hamburgers. Um the, there was an email that was sent out to council that I, for public um uh for everyone to know that the PUD has officially withdrawn their application for the development agreement for the first year field um project. So we will hopefully move forward with um some under other inquiries about that property. I assume that it will remain for sale, but um that they have given us the the official word on that. On code enforcement, um as we come up to election day, we've been focusing on campaign signs. And I think that the communication that we've had, I think we did two rounds of communication to the candidates and which has been, I think, very successful. And I wanted to bring up one thing. People probably see this in the community and this, it's it's not just about political signs, but the the intersection of one seventy-ninth and one fifty-four, which is as you go under the five twenty-two um bridge. And there's those fences that we see a lot of signs for, for a whole lot of variety of community events and political season. And it's always been this real gray area in terms of enforcement for the city. And uh and just for, I think it's in, it's important for the public to understand this and we might, we'll put together a Facebook posting for this because that property is Wash Dot right away. And so Wash Dot owns those fences. And the city allows signs to be placed on fences with the property owner's permission. And we've never really had any response back from Wash Dot about, are you, do you approve this? Well, Wash Dot, as a public agency, has a whole process to approve signs. But we had finally gotten con- confirmation from them that, no, we do not provide any permission to put any signs on that fence. So the reason that I bring it up is that some of the signs that I that I, you you might see there over the course of the year would be advertisement for, we're taking applications for Little League. Um events like that show up there. So it it you may hear about that, um that why aren't we being allowed to do that? But it's it it's a Wash Dot decision or 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 we finally gotten uh confirmation from Wash Dot. So it it may be create some heartache for folks in the community, but um at least we have a clear path to move forward on that. So um with that, I will conclude my report unless anybody has any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions? All right. Thank you. Next person we have is our finance department report with Julie. Good evening, Ms. Elson.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. Um so you have in your packet our finance report through the end of September. And you can see revenues are still coming in as planned with the exception of development-related revenues. And staff and the city employees continue to be fiscally fiscally responsible. However, there are several non-discretionary expenditures that are coming in over budget. And in addition to that, um the adopted budget assumed a beginning um fund balances. And that's what we projected our um expenditures for twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six on. And we are currently um kind of coming, looking at coming back to you next week with a plan to update those beginning fund balances and um true up the budget. So.
Great.
Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Elson. Any questions? Go ahead, Councilmember Walker.
You said the discretionary spending is in line with projections from the bud- the start of the year.
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Elson.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda then is uh we're now moving to nine, which is merit administrative reports. And we'll start off with nine point one, city administrator report extended agenda. Administrator night.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. I'm so pleased to be in the council chambers. This is my first meeting since returning from vacation. It's absolutely fabulous. So looking forward on the extended agenda for the meeting on Tuesday, the twenty-first next week, the City Council Finance and Human Resources Committee meeting will be canceled. But we will be starting our study session at six PM that evening. So if you're not regularly a part of the Finance Human Resources Committee, please mark your calendars for a six PM start time. We will be having a couple of presentations as a part of that study session. So the uh Joint Legislative Audit and Review Committee, or J-LARQ, Public Records Report will be presented by uh Sherry Simonson and Patricia Pendry, and that court assessment report will be presented by Liam McCorkle. We will have then a discussion item, which will be the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six mid-by-budget adjustment with our finance director, Julie Elson. Then looking forward uh beyond that to the twenty-eighth, we will be having a P-three committee meeting that evening, which starts at six PM. We have a couple of new business items, the Tierney Place Oak Street Phase Three Design Options Review, which will be presented by our city engineer, Scott Peterson, and Derek Khan. And then our Solid Waste Request for Proposal Review and Options with Jacob Roberts and Megan Darrow. For the regular business meeting that evening, starting at seven PM, we have a swearing-in ceremony for two officers, Nolan Hollingsworth and Dane Munich, and then a retirement acknowledgement for Sergeant Jason Southard. A public hearing will be held on the twenty twenty-six property tax. And then an executive session for potential litigation. Consent includes our accounts payable, meeting minutes, and then a defender contract, public defender contract with Liam McCorkle. Under new business, we have the wholesale water rate analysis with Julie Elson and Jacob Roberts, the twenty twenty-six legislative priorities with Liam McCorkle, and then department reports. And that's it for the uh remainder of October.
Any questions on the extended agenda? All right. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda? The city administrator report nine point two.
Uh thank you. So uh just a reminder to save the date because we do have a special council business meeting scheduled for December second. That'll be our second to last meeting because December ninth will be our last. Uh council photos will be held um at December ninth or the sixteenth. That won't be before, be before a council meeting on the sixteenth or yes, yes, before the council meeting on the sixteenth. And then uh municipal court moving schedule, just a reminder that the court will be closed uh this week, ninth and tenth and thirteenth and fourteenth as uh our staff, court staff move from their temporary location at the Public Works Building over into their new location uh at the end of this building in their new municipal court. So looking forward to their reopening then on the uh fifteenth, which is tomorrow. Excited to have them join us in this building.
Thank you. Any questions on the city administrator report nine point two? All right. Thank you. Go into the mayor's report. Um Monroe this week is in your packets. Uh the one thing that uh the the major thing that I've been working on, among other duties, has been on the budget uh the last couple of weeks. I uh I know that we'll be bringing forward a a mid-budget uh mayor's recommendation uh for modifications a week from today. I thank each of you ahead of time for reviewing that document and um in your consideration of it. Uh you'll be getting that on Friday. Uh the other thing is that as part of that, I really, really, really appreciate the work that our staff has been doing um to support that effort and to lead that effort in different ways. And so to our senior leadership team and our city administrator, thank you so much for all the work that you're doing on that. Okay. Um that's all that I have for today. Uh we're gonna go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. And for the um for the recording, uh we have an interesting sort of order of events tonight. Uh we were first gonna have an executive session under ten point one. Uh we will then need to come back into session uh for uh any potential action to occur, including but not necessarily limited to adjournment. Uh we will then uh leave the room for what's called a closed session. This is a form of executive session. It's a closed session for collective bargaining. Um unlike a regular executive session where I give a timeline where I will, where we will be in executive session, and then we announce extensions with potential action to occur following uh that type of session. Uh the meeting just ends after that. So there's no formal adjournment or anything following the closed session. So again, the order will be the executive session, come back in here for potential action, including but not limited to adjournment. And then we'll go into clo- closed session and then uh the meeting will be, uh the public side of the meeting will be over at that point in time. Do any of the council members have any questions about that before we do this? All right. Um and I'm gonna ask the staff uh for the executive session, potential litigation ten point nine. Approximately, how much time do you anticipate needing? With the potential of extensions. Shall we start with five minutes, ten minutes?
Uh we probably need ten minutes.
Okay. So what we'll do is we'll start with ten minutes. Okay, so we are um the time right now is seven fifty-two. We will go into an executive session for an initial ten minutes, beginning at ten fifty-two. This is uh potential litigation pursuant to RCW forty Okay, we are now going to go into executive session. Uh this is potential litigation pursuant to RCW forty-two point thirty point one ten subsection one, subsection little i for an initial ten minutes, beginning at seven fifty-two. Uh we will announce any extensions as may be necessary in the uh both in this meeting room and also uh online. And um there will be potential action to follow, if not adjournment, following the executive session uh before. I've lost my counsel. Uh Zach, uh I see that you put your video on. So before we go into executive session, did you have something to add?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor. You captured the um the requirements legally perfectly. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. So uh we're gonna update the time that we're starting. Uh it'll be ten minutes initially, starting at seven fifty-three PM. Thank you.
Executive session has been extended ten minutes.
All right, the time is now eight thirteen PM. We are now out of executive session, as stated previously. We will be adjourning and then going into closed session, which does not require adjournment after the closed session or extension. So at this point in time, unless there is objection, we will be adjourned. Seeing no objection, we are adjourned. Have a great week, everybody.